Okay, it's 7:00 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This meeting is being televised through Watertown Cable Access Television. It's also being virtually held and the information for the Zoom is on the town's website on the agenda. There is also a telephone number where people could participate if they need to call in by phone. And there is an email there that you can email questions or concerns. So I'd like to please have the council clerk call the roll.
Counsel Feltonner?
Present.
Counsel Gannon?
Present.
Counsel Canelas?
Present.
Counsel Palumba?
He's present.
Okay. Counsel Pichorelli?
Present.
Counsel Woodland?
Present.
Counsel Bays?
Present.
Counsel Donato?
Present.
President Sedaris?
President, thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public forum. If there's any member of the public that wish to be heard, please use your raise your hand function. I will remind everyone in the public forum section that we ask that you state your full name and address, and you are limited to two minutes under the council rules. So at this point, I'm going to recognize Marilyn Roach.
Am I unmuted?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Marilyn Roach?
Yes, thank you. Yes, Marilyn Roach, 141 Marshall Street. I am representing the Historical Society of Watertown tonight, 28th March. And we have a brief statement. The Historical Society of Watertown, in reference to the Grove Street property under discussion tonight, would like to point out the cultural and architectural importance to Watertown's history of the Schick House that stands at the edge of that property. For one thing, the house built in the 1850s is one of the few remaining examples of high-style Italianate architecture in Watertown, a style inspired by Italian pillars reinterpreted in a distinctly American way. The house retains its detailed interior plasterwork, the carved staircase, the variety of carved stone fireplaces and other features. It gives the house its unique individuality. They're not building houses like that anymore, and if it's lost, there's no replacing it. The house could have a future-like, small office space or breakfast or something else useful. Beginning as a country estate stocked with prized horses, the property became a working dairy farm in the 20th century. Around 1914, it was purchased by Jacob and Mary Schick, Jewish immigrants from Eastern Europe. The Schicks, first resident in Boston's West End, established their dairy in Watertown when the town still had rural space. They were also one of the first Jewish families to settle here, becoming an integral part of our town's ethnic and religious diversity. Observant Jews, they sold their kosher milk to everybody who appreciated good-quality milk. This is the typical immigrant success story, backbreaking hard work, fierce determination to succeed, and a willingness to take chances. They built the business into one of the largest dairy farms in the state, with over 200 head of cattle at its peak after the farm itself had moved to Wayland as the Watertown Dairy. Members of the Schick family continued to live in the house until 2002. The architectural, agricultural, and cultural histories of the house that the house represents, once lost, cannot be replaced. We at the Historical Society hope that whoever owns the land next will help maintain the legacy of the Schick House to bring this unique part of Watertown's past forward to be a useful part of our town's future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to be heard at this time? Counsel Pichorelli, are there any emails for public forum? Okay. Seeing none, I close the public forum and move on to the examination of minutes. Can I get a motion on the minutes of October 27?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt the minutes of October 27 as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counsel Gannon?
Yes.
Counsel Canelas?
Yes.
Counsel Palumba?
Yes.
Counsel Pichorelli?
Yes.
Counsel Woodland?
Yes.
Counsel Bays?
Yes.
Counsel Donato?
Yes.
Counsel Feltonner?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is President's Report. The only thing I have under President's Report is, for those that aren't aware, the NBC News last night with Lester Holt did a piece on testing of students and our superintendent of schools was one of the people that was interviewed. And we had a school committee meeting last night and she went over the testing parameters. And we're one of the few people, places in the country that are doing a broad-based testing of our students. So if anybody gets a chance to go and see that few, you know, 45-second to a minute piece, it's very interesting. And I just think the community should be aware that we're again on the cusp of being one of the first people to be able to test students so that we can keep everyone as safe as possible. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public hearing. And 6A is a public hearing and vote on a request for a grant of location from N-Star Electric, DBA, doing business as EverSource Energy, to install one 2-inch conduit on Templeton Parkway, southeastally from pole 228 to, thence turning northeasterly, approximately 154 feet south of Mount Auburn Street, a distance of approximately 90 plus or minus feet of conduit. The reason for this work is to replace the existing electric service for a national grid control box at 11 Templeton Parkway. Before I, is there, it appears that there's someone from EverSource here, so we will promote you and allow you to speak, please, Joanne, I assume? Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Callender. I'm here filling in for Maureen Carroll, representing EverSource.
Could you please go over the proposal?
Sure. As you just mentioned, we are seeking a grant of location to install 90 feet of conduit in Templeton Parkway. This is to replace existing electric service for national grid control box at 11 Templeton Parkway in Watertown.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If there's any member of the public that wishes to be heard on this particular issue, please use the raise your hand function. Seeing none, then close the public hearing and ask for a motion from the council.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt the petition to install the underground conduit at Templeton Parkway.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Counsel Canelas?
Thank you. It should be noted that some of this work has already been completed. And through you, Mr. President, if Mr. McGoon could bring us up to date that residents will not actually be seeing that there will be open pavement. Thank you.
Steve?
Thank you, Mr. President. Unfortunately, coordination between National Grid and EverSource and town wasn't best. So this is installation of a gas regulator pit. The EverSource electrical connection was installed. The conduit for that was installed, one regular pit was installed, but there was not a grant of location separately for that. So this is correcting that, where the conduit has already been installed. The road won't be further disturbed, but this will recognize what was done.
Thank you. If I may add, there's an echo coming through.
We're trying to address that now.
Thank you.
Counsel Woodland?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to make a follow-up comment from the last time EverSource was in front of us. I had mentioned that there is a pole on Sweets Court. The pole is actually owned by Verizon. They put in a second pole because the first one was leaning. Long story short, there are a whole bunch of wires on that second pole that need to be transferred over to the new one. My understanding is that EverSource owns those wires and they need to start that process. I had mentioned this at the last meeting because our DPW has reached out to EverSource to start this process five months ago. Apparently, it is still underway and doesn't seem like we're getting a great response from EverSource. As I mentioned in my last comments, this will be the final, I guess, warning. EverSource needs to respond. It looks horrible to have one second pole leaning off of one pole that's recently installed. Looks like it's going to tip over and fall on the house that's right next to it. So, Joanne, if it's okay, I know it's not you, but if you communicate along, this council has a process in our charter whereby any member of this council can invoke what we call Charter Privilege, whereby the discussion on a particular topic is halted until the next meeting if a counselor initiates this process. So I'm not going to do it tonight, but moving forward, every single EverSource proposal, I am personally going to table until we start getting a response about this pole issue over on Sweets Court. So every time you come in front of us moving forward, I am literally going to table this at least two weeks until we can get you on the next meeting. Just wanted to give a heads up on that. Thank you.
I'll be glad to bring that back to my supervisor tomorrow and hopefully we'll get it resolved sooner than later.
Great. And they're free to reach out to me as well.
To Counsel Woodland's point, we will not be placing these items on the agenda until this is fixed. After this. Counsel Donato?
Thank you, Mr. President. Not to jump on Joanne here, and I know that's not why she's in front of us today, but another issue that was recently brought to our attention was that a light pole at 275 North Beacon Street has not worked in, you know, seemingly almost seven years. We were informed by the DPW that this pole no longer has power to it and that this is an EverSource issue which has been brought to EverSource's attention and nothing has been done about it. I think it brings attention and that, you know, been brought to our attention by residents and we'd like to see rectified.
And I will bring that issue back as well. 275 North Beacon Street, a light pole that has no power.
And not to, not to beat up on Joanne, but please be advised that as the person that sets the agenda, until at least these two issues are rectified, no EverSource request will be placed on a council agenda. So you can send that message back to whoever needs to be informed of that. Thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other comments? Can I get Counsel Base?
Can you add Moore Street to that? I think, is that ever Source? There's a leaning pole on Moore Street as well that hasn't been, they haven't moved the wires over.
That's M-O-R-S-E, Moore Street?
Yeah, and I can't, I was looking.
It's 40-something and it's been.
47, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments? Can I get a roll call, please?
Counsel Canelas?
Yes.
Counsel Palumba?
Yes.
Counsel Pichorelli?
Yes.
Counsel Woodland?
Yes.
Counsel Bays?
Yes.
Counsel Donato?
Yes.
Counsel Feltonner?
Yes.
Counsel Gannon?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing and vote on a request for a grant of location from N-Star Electric Company, doing business as EverSource Energy, to install one 2-inch conduit on Belmont Street, easterly from pole 11109, near the intersection of Duff Street, a distance approximately 17 plus or minus feet of conduit. The reason for this work is to provide an underground electric service for a national grid control box at 980 Belmont Street. Joanne, Joanne, sorry.
Yes, thank you. Again, that is, we're seeking a grant of location to install approximately 17 feet of conduit into Belmont Street, and that is to provide underground electric service for a national grid skate control box at 980 Belmont Street in Watertown.
Thank you. Since this is also a public hearing, I ask if any member of the public wishes to be heard on this. I don't see any hands. Can I get a motion on the petition?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the petition for the underground conduit on Belmont Street as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counsel Palumba?
Yes.
Counsel Pichorelli?
Yes.
Counsel Woodland?
Yes.
Counsel Bays?
Yes.
Counsel Donato?
Yes.
Counsel Feltonner?
Yes.
Counsel Gannon?
Yes.
Counsel Canelas?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is item seven, which is informational presentations. And this is an update on the possibility of a strategic partnership between Buckingham Brown and Nichols School and the town of Watertown. And we have with us this evening Dr. Jennifer Price, head of Buckingham Brown and Nichols School, and David Barnett, president and CEO of Mount Auburn Cemetery. And I'll turn it over first to the town manager, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. The very exciting time tonight. Talking a year ago, November 12, 2019, we had an agenda item that was discussing the possibility of a strategic partnership with Buckingham Brown and Nichols in the town. We, at that time, we talked about conversation that this would be a wonderful opportunity to increase the open space for recreation and exercise for our community. The council president, Sedaris, and I had signed a letter of support to the trustees in Mount Auburn Cemetery back on October 17, 2019, basically endorsing this excellent public-private partnership. The subsequent to that, at the, just reading some excerpts from the November 12, 2019 Town Council Minutes, the councils had stated their support and raised the following items. "This is a huge opportunity for the town to provide additional open space in assist with the recreational fields for our community. This situation will allow for 20 acres of contiguous open space. The council would oppose any large development in that area. The purchase would slow development and would not increase in an already difficult traffic situation along Grove Street. The proposed use would be compatible with the historic cemetery site." And again, that was a year ago, which is hard to believe. But tonight, we've got very exciting news. This afternoon, early afternoon, we added additional information. Tonight's presentation will be Dr. Jennifer Price, the head of Buckingham Brown and Nichols. She'll provide a PowerPoint presentation of some very, very exciting news and kind of walking through and including an ending with a timeline. Additionally, we're very honored tonight to have with us Mr. David Barnett, the president and CEO of Mount Auburn Cemetery, who again, I very, very much want to thank the, Mr. Barnett and the trustees of the cemetery. Thank Mr. Robert Erasian for his efforts on this wonderful opportunity tonight. But without further ado, Mr. President, I'll speak after Dr. Price and Mr. Barnett on this strategic partnership. And it's really, really a wonderful evening to have both Buckingham Brown and Nichols here, the head of the school, along with the president and CEO of Mount Auburn Cemetery. So, Mr. President, members of the council, without further ado, I'd like to bring forward Dr. Jennifer Price.
Welcome, Dr. Price and David Barnett.
It's an honor to be here. I'm going to share my screen. Hello, everyone. It's, I can't believe it was a year ago that we were together. A lot has happened in a year. We've dealt with the global pandemic. We've shut school, we've opened school. I want to echo President Sedaris's comments about how Watertown is leading the way in terms of student testing. Many of us are looking at the work you guys are doing to try to enhance our schools. So kudos to Watertown. Thank you, Mr. Driscoll. You're an incredible partner in this process. Thank you for sticking with us. And I'm so pleased that we come together with Bob Erasian and Dave Barnett from the cemetery. So where do we stand, just really quickly? Where are we? So BBNN and Mount Auburn Cemetery have signed a purchase and sale agreement for the 6.1-acre parcel land on Grove Street. That's exciting news. We've been working at this for over a year. I really want to thank Mount Auburn Cemetery for taking a pause as all of us got hit with the pandemic and we had to shut down school and then try to reopen in a global pandemic. So incredible partnership, I believe, between these two nonprofits. And we have signed a purchase and sale. We are here tonight to discuss and hopefully have you favorably consider a memorandum of understanding between BBNN and the town of Watertown. And the reason why we waited till this morning is we are in negotiations with the city of Cambridge on the disposition of Buckingham Field, which is a property that we own on Fresh Pond, which allows us to use one asset and leverage one asset to make sure this is a reality for Watertown. And BBNN and the city of Cambridge considered that in executive session last night. So I appreciate everyone's patience in terms of getting the specific MOU up this morning. So just a little bit about who we are. And first and foremost, just a little bit of a reminder of BBNN. We're a 1,000-student school pre-K to 12. We serve over 90 communities. This year, we've actually increased the number of students on financial aid by 2% from last year. I was with you. We have 26% of our students receive some sort of financial assistance. 32 members are our faculty and staff, so about 16% of our full-time employees live in Watertown. We have 29 students from Watertown. Many of the Watertown students participate in our summer camps and many BBNN students volunteer nonprofits in Watertown, such as the Boys and Girls Club and the Perkins School. I'm just going to show you this slide in terms of our campuses. You can see we are in Cambridge and Watertown. We are all over. Our upper school, which is the one right along the charles, where I'm putting my arrow, is our largest campus. We have, this is Buckingham Field, which we are in conversation with Cambridge for the disposition of it. This is our lower school. This is our middle school. We currently own a piece of property down here, which is the old Amvets, and we rent a piece of property over on 46 Belmont in Watertown, which was used for administrative offices and now, as a result of COVID, being used to support kids. I'm now going to introduce the other person presenting with me, someone we have worked incredibly closely with, who actually, all of this land in the middle is Mount Auburn Cemetery. I want to say before Dave steps up, one of the greatest honors of my summer was to walk Mount Auburn Cemetery with Dave Barnett. He is an incredible treasure for Mount Auburn Cemetery and so much what he has done in his illustrious career. It's amazing to walk the cemetery with him and see the impact he has physically had on probably the nation's most beautiful cemetery. So Dave, I turn it over to you.
Well, thank you, Jen. It's a great team that makes Mount Auburn what it is. So thank you. I'm glad we got together, but I, you know, as you already pointed out, that whole, there's 175 acres between BBNN School and the property we're now talking about. We're open every day of the year for free. We have, as it says here, I'll go quickly, over 200,000 annual visitors come to Mount Auburn and over 100,000 are there permanently. I don't know exactly how many there are, but we know that there are many Watertown residents who live their life in Watertown and are now at Mount Auburn. Many of you, I hope, know Mount Auburn well, but we are accredited arboretum with over 5,000 trees and Mass Audubon Society, important bird area, and a national historic landmark with an incredible collection of funerary art. So, but also in addition, I wanted to mention that we do have 55 year-round employees, six of whom are residents of Watertown, and another 45 seasonal employees, interns, and over 150 now volunteers, actively volunteering at Mount Auburn. And in addition to what it says on the screen, I really just want to add that we've long been active in the Watertown community and tried to be a good neighbor and involve citizen in our, in our community. And so we are particularly pleased that it has come after a long process of discussion on all sides. We're particularly pleased that the sale of our land at BBNN will be beneficial to the Watertown community as, in addition to BBNN, as we all work together to be good stewards of this land. So back to you, Jen. That's for now. I'll, I may have additional remarks later, but that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Just a little bit of the basics of the memorandum of understanding, much of which we shared last year, just one addition. Each park will maintain their own facility. Watertown will use BBNN's fields during the evenings on Saturday when we're not playing. Normally, we use the fields between 11:00 AM to 5:00, and also on Sundays. Watertown will have scheduling rights in the summer. Watertown, I understand, we understand that as you guys are undergoing school construction, you may need to use Filippello Park during construction and we'll be completely flexible there. BBNN will use Filippello right after school and BBNN will have full-day access in late August and over March break, just during our preseason, which normally will last about two weeks for each of us. And as you'll see in the upcoming diagram, we've also discussed an addition that we've had since last year is when we have a fieldhouse, when that is complete. We don't know the timeline on that yet. It's very much dependent on raising money. Watertown will have access to the fieldhouse when it is complete. I want to go over the diagram and really highlight a few things here. So as I hope you can see, the idea here is a 20-acre athletic complex. And as I was talking with Mr. Driscoll, you know, we are not doing this as a six acre. We are doing this to create a 20-acre athletic complex for the residents of Watertown and the students of BBNN. And so I just want to highlight a few aspects of this and some changes that have happened over the last year. As you will notice, we've moved the parking and the access and the fieldhouse up into this area. As many of you highlighted last year, there's a very huge wall there. And so from a topographical standpoint, it's best to have the parking and the potential future two-story fieldhouse up against that wall, which then slides all of the fields closer down to Filippello. I tried to outline the Filippello part and the BBNN part. Our goal would very much to be if somebody came in, you know, from another school or from another town, they would have no idea that this wasn't a joint athletic complex. The idea is not to put fences around our areas, but to create a 20-acre kind of athletic complex for everyone to use. A few areas to highlight. You will see up in this area, which is where the community gardens are. I do want to let those involved in the community gardens, even though that the purchase and sale, and hopefully we will be purchasing this land by the end of January, our goal is to have a whole other growing season for the community gardens so that there's a year at least for folks to make arrangements. Also, you will see that we are proposing and we would be putting synthetic turf on there. I want to really highlight that, given the amount of use we expect on these fields. If we are truly talking about a partnership where these fields are being used seven days a week between BBNN and the residents of Watertown, the only way to make those fields be able to be used at that level with that intensity is to have a synthetic turf, or frankly, the fields will not be good to either you or to us. You will also notice, and I very much appreciate the comments from the Historic Commission, we are not anticipating keeping the Schick House on the grounds of this athletic complex. Simply put, we cannot do what we need to do in terms of having two full-size fields, which are instrumental to our athletic program and also to the program that you would be in terms of your town sports program. I do want to say, and I know that Mount Auburn Cemetery has made the same offer, we are more than happy to gift, to give the Schick House to the town of Watertown and to anyone who would like to have it, to be able to restore it. But in terms of the investment that we are making for the six acres, we simply need all of the space to be able to meet the programmatic needs of BBNN and the needs of Watertown. And then finally, I just want to go over the timeline so everyone can understand that we are on the path, but this is definitely not a done deal in terms of having this come to fruition. First and foremost, as I said, you know, the idea here is a 20-acre complex. It is my hope that we will finalize the MOU with all of you. We will then move to a joint use agreement. And as your town manager likes to say, that's And as your town manager likes to say, that's where the devil becomes in the details, but we will absolutely move towards that joint use agreement. We then have to go through a number of things. We have to get our tax exempt bond approval for mass development. We are on the December 10th agenda and are moving forward there. We are obviously, of course, doing our due diligence, which also includes some environmental and we expect a report. We are drilling actually this week, et cetera. We expect a report end of December. We also have to obviously close on our tax exempt. We have been pre-approved our bond. We are ready to go, but the closing will be in the beginning of January. The city council in Cambridge is going to, hopefully at their January 5th meeting, approve the acquiring of Buckingham Field, which is obviously an important part of this from, from our side in terms of being able to afford these, the 6.1 acres in Watertown. It is our hope, and this is obviously tentative, that we can appear in front of the Watertown Historic Commission to talk about the Schick House on January 14th. The BBNN board is actually not going to vote to actually finalize the purchase of Grove Street until January 21st. So my hope is that all the things previous to that go well. And then I can present to my board that we are financing this place. Our, we've, in a MO, we've got a joint use agreement with all of you. The environmental has, has come out in a way that we feel comfortable, that are, we have gotten our tax exempt status, which we believe will happen, and that we have come to some understanding of the Schick House. And then on January 21st, we will vote hopefully favorably to purchase the Grove Street property. The closing date is scheduled for January 29th. As I think many of you know, there's a sunset clause on the lease for parking for Mount Auburn Hospital, which ends on October 31st. We will honor that lease and from Mount Auburn Cemetery. The idea is then to begin the construction on the two fields, only the two fields. The, the field house will have to come later. And then our hope is to have these fields ready for spring of 2022. I'm going to stop sharing and now we are available. And as, as, as I've said, my hope tonight is that you all look favorably upon our consideration for a memorandum of understanding. We're happy to answer any questions. Dave and I are here and any questions that you may have. Thank you very much, Mr. Driscoll. It has been such a pleasure working with you. And we're not there yet, but we're moving down the field. No pun intended.
Thank you very much, Dr. Price. I'll turn it over to Town Manager Driscoll.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. In advance of both Dr. Price and Mr. Barnett entertaining questions on the proposal. And I'd hold off on speaking on the consideration and action on the memorandum of understanding. But I do want to close prior to opening up questions for Town Council. And once again, thank the Mount Auburn Cemetery for all the efforts in working with Buckingham Brown and Nichols. I think we talked, Mr. President, members of the council, that we thought entering a strategic partnership with Buckingham Brown and Nichols would be a win-win. I think tonight with the president of Mount Auburn Cemetery here, it is a win, a win, and a win. Just by way of background, and I hit a lot of echoing when I opened my remarks, but just as a reminder, goal one of what, of the town's open space and recreation plan reads as follows. Improve the amount, accessibility, and the condition of Watertown's recreation resources. Additionally, back then, the Honorable Town Council's Fiscal Year 20 Budget Policy Guideline to, I read as follows, develop a budgetary plan to meet and identify needs for acquiring, acquisition of land for open space and/or recreation use. So I, again, I want to thank Buckingham Brown and Nichols, Mount Auburn Cemetery, the town of Watertown. I, I, I believe this is a very exciting opportunity for partnership with both of the nonprofits, but in particular Buckingham Brown and Nichols and the town that will increase our open space for recreation and open, and recreation and exercise. And I believe the excellent, this excellent public-private partnership would benefit both the residents of Watertown and Buckingham Brown and Nichols. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Counselor Gannon has the first question. Counselor Gannon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, and first of all, I want to commend the parties who brought all this together. This is a tremendous opportunity for Watertown and adding open space to an existing open space. It's, it's a lifetime of opportunity that's going to be a multi-generational wonderful outcome. I applaud everyone involved who got, made this happen. And I just had a couple of questions about the, the proposal here. And one of them, I mean, I, I go running along the Charles River and there's a similar proposal, a similar use of government property on, at the Mont Saintier Daily Field on the Charles River in Brighton. Simmons College has an agreement, actually, you know, they use the property. But as I run by on non-school, non-state activities, I see a lot of families playing, neighborhood kids playing on the facilities. And I just want to see, I just want to inquire as to whether it's anticipated that the gates will be locked and otherwise facilities not be available during the times that either BBNN or the town would be scheduling activities? Just wanted to get some insight into that. Thank you.
That's a great example. That's actually DCR land and it's rented. This is obviously a more permanent solution, I hope. We, we have no anticipation of any gates between anything. I think it would be just the same as Filippello. This is, you know, our, one of our, if our strategic plan, the number one thing that we're talking about is principal engagement in our, in our community, our city, in our world. And putting up gates that prohibits kids from practicing and playing is not principled engagement in my, in my mind. So the idea here is that this will be, feel like a resource to the residents of Watertown. Of course, when, when my students are out there practicing or playing, it will be a little harder, but hopefully they'll come cheer us on.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And I, I look forward to going, running other activities on the combined BBNN Watertown facility. So thank you again to everyone involved.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Canelas.
Thank you. No questions, but certainly comments. This is a very exciting time and I'm delighted to see this come to fruition. We discussed this a year ago and there's been a lot of hard work behind the scenes and I commend everyone for making this happen. Many of us in neighborhoods remember Hanover Development that had proposed hundreds of housing units on that parcel. And the area residents were, were just so upset, so annoyed that there would be so much congestion in this very dense neighborhood. And finally, the developer decided to pull out because wasn't going to go anywhere. So this is just tremendous news that there's going to be open green space that's going to bring vitality and young people to the neighborhood and give us everything that the area really needs in the community. And as I've said at some meetings, it's not always about the money. Certainly, this parcel could be developed and bring in lots of money for the coffers of Watertown over the, the period. But I, I think this is just tremendous. And to Mr. Barnett's comments about some Watertown folks being permanent residents of Mount Auburn Cemetery, I will be a permanent East Ender for eternity and viewing the fields across Grove Street. So I hope not in the immediate future. But thank you so much for everyone that's done their part and certainly looking forward to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Canelas. Any other member of the council have any concerns or comments? You can also make comments when we bring up the MOU. Counselor Felton.
Thank you. I also just wanted to echo enthusiasm. I know it's, these things are complicated and there's more work to be done, but we really appreciate you working so diligently in the partnership and your transparency about your intention and your timeframe. And just looking forward to the future.
Anyone else from the council? Let me close the informational presentation by saying thank you to Dr. Price and Dr. Barnett, David Barnett. Bob Oragian is with us also with Mount Auburn Cemetery's board. We sat here about a year ago and we're all pretty excited about the opportunities. And I was really concerned about where we were going and COVID hit and we weren't sure if this was going to happen. But this is fantastic news for both BBNN and the town of Watertown and Mount Auburn Cemetery. I think that this is, to use the manager's word, a win-win-win. And I think that knowing the difficulties we have here with fields and scheduling and so on and so forth, this is going to help significantly in the future. And, and one key point in Dr. Price's presentation, I think is really very important that there's not going to be any gates on this facility. I think that's an important piece that this community should be aware that this is going to be, you can walk, if nobody's on the field, you can walk on the field. And I, and I think that's key. And, and, and I think, you know, integrating them as a one huge recreational facility, I'm sure there's going to be other cities and towns that are going to be envious of us. So thank you all very much for your diligent and hard work in getting us to this point. I'd like to get a motion now to suspend the rules to bring up item 8D.
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Pichorelli.
Yes.
Counselor Woodland.
Yes.
Counselor Baze.
Yes.
Counselor Donato.
Yes.
Counselor Felton.
Yes.
Counselor Gannon.
Yes.
Counselor Canelas.
Yes.
Counselor Palumba.
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. Item 8D is consideration and action on a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, by and between the town of Watertown and Buckingham Brown and Nichols School. Mr. Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. As the president just read the agenda that was posted for Friday, I'd like to, in, at the request of Buckingham Brown and Nichols and Mount Auburn Cemetery, they were working on some final details. And thus, we, the council president had stopped the, the title of the memorandum of understanding for the, for the public, for the posting for the agenda on Friday, where it, where he indicated memorandum of understanding, MOU, by and between the town of Watertown and Buckingham Brown and Nichols School. The rest of the MOU states as follows, is the title of it is regarding the proposed shared use of Watertown Filippello Fields and BBNN's future fields on Grove Street, Watertown. So not only was the, this afternoon, early afternoon, we linked the proposed MOU before Town Council tonight, but there was Dr. Price's PowerPoint presentation and also Mr. Barnett's comments. Additionally, there were three press releases issued today, a joint one by Buckingham Brown and Nichols and Mount Auburn Cemetery, and then to the Mount Auburn Cemetery community by Dr. Barnett, by David Barnett, and then Dr. Price and the Chair of the Trustees for Buckingham Brown and Nichols also put out press releases, which were all linked this afternoon. So very quickly, Mr. President, to go through the MO, the memorandum of understanding before council tonight. I won't certainly read all of it, but the highlights, it would be a shared athletic fields opportunity. Filippello Park is a beautiful ribbon park with two playing fields and many other amenities. It's situated on 14 acres of landscaped open space located between Arlington and Grove Streets in Watertown. BBNN is seeking to acquire six acres of land in order to construct two multipurpose playing fields, including a modest field house and approximately 80 parking spaces located at Grove Street and abutting Filippello Park. Thus, the, with the President Sedaris alluded to about having the 20 acres of open space. The proposed cooperative agreement in the MOU, it reads as follows, assuming that BBNN is successful in acquiring the property, the members of the Watertown Town Council and the Board of Trustees of BBNN have agreed to support efforts to enter into a cooperative agreement in the form of a joint licensing arrangement between the parties, the mutual sharing of the athletic fields of Filippello Park. And in the property, in the property that BBNN will acquire, the cooperative agreement will expand access to open green space for active recreation use by the children and adults of Watertown and other nearby communities and by the students of BBNN. The combined athletic facilities will significantly increase the amount of recreation resources for the town of Watertown while addressing a critical need for playing fields at BBNN. The, the anticipated under the terms of the cooperative agreement, the town of Watertown Department of Recreation and BBNN's Athletic Department would administrate the scheduling and use of the fields in accordance with the, with the general terms as outlined in the MOU. Dr. Price kind of alluded to when the school would allow the town to use their fields and conversely, when the town would allow the BBNN to use the two fields, playing fields in Filippello Park. A key statement within the proposed MOU is as follows. The intent of this MOU is that the town will have a greater amount of time available for public use of school fields than the school will have time for scheduled school use of the town fields on Filippello Park. The, there is about a good faith in the maintenance of the fields. Dr. Price alluded to be responsible of each to maintain and upkeep their own respective fields. Dr. Price also said, within the MOU, we, we have ongoing Watertown construction projects that may need to alleviate, to make some changes to the outline and the proposed, proposed utilization of the, both the fields that are over the 20 acres included. It is anticipated the cooperative agreement will commence upon BBNN's completion of the construction of the fields and anticipated term will extend for a period of 20 years, subject to municipal limitations and length of contract. It may be renewed by a joint agreement of the school and town of Watertown for an additional term of 20 years. So the, what's before you tonight, Mr. President, members of the council, is the president indicated is consideration and action on the MOU between the town of Watertown and Buckingham Brown and Nichols regarding the proposed shared use of Watertown's Filippello Fields and BBNN's future fields on Grove Street, Watertown. And again, as I mentioned earlier, more than, more than once, I respectfully ask you favorable consideration of the proposed MOU for you tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to bring this on the floor?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we authorize a town manager to execute the memorandum of understanding as presented tonight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Palumba.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor President. I want to first appreciate and congratulate Buckingham Brown and Nichols and the Mount Auburn Cemetery. It's a great step that has been taken and I appreciate really the, the cemetery for making it possible. I know that there are other folks who are interested in this property and it was wonderful that you have decided, Mr. Barrett Barnett, to offer the property to Buckingham Brown and Nichols. And obviously, Dr. Price, congratulations to you for owning a piece of Watertown. I, I know that it's wonderful to have such an elite school particip, be part of our, our community. I, I say that and I will be voting for this, but I do want to raise a concern that I think is very important. I was going to employ you to reconsider the artificial turf, Dr. Price. I sat in a number of, well, two very long meetings a couple of years, three years ago, held at our library when there was a discussion of artificial turf on our renovated, the field that will be renovated in Victory Field 2. And I listened to many, many parents who had serious objection to it, to that field being, becoming artificially turfed. I heard also, also that, that meeting, there were coaches and athletes who wanted it to happen, as well as our recreational director. But there were significant number of parents and families who had real serious concerns and didn't want it. The strength of that outpouring of concern led us, led the town council president to, when the discussion of how to renovate Victory Field 2 came to the, to the council, which was then assigned to a working group to do, made it clear that the issue of- made it clear that the issue of artificial turf was off our agenda and it was determined that that park would not be artificially turfed in any way. I know from some of the folks I know who've graduated from your school that you have a commitment to creating leaders in the field of science, medicine, government. And I would hope that at one point in the future, if more, if you don't feel, at this point, it's clear that you do not feel, nor does your board feel, that there's enough scientific evidence to say that artificial turf would be detrimental to students or you wouldn't have agreed to have them play on it. There are families in Watertown who believe that there is enough evidence for that. I would hope that within the 20 years, that from one point to the next, that if you, you and your alumni, where you turn to for support and for feedback, do believe that artificial turf is detrimental to those playing on it, that you will reconsider the decision at one point in the future and transfer your parks, I mean, there are fields to grass fields. Once again, I will be supporting the proposal, but I would not feel comfortable if I hadn't raised this. There were just, I can ask any member of the council, most members of the council who were on the council at the time, the strength and the breadth of opposition to artificial turf in our community was fairly strong. So, again, I hope that at one point, building on the history that you have of leadership in the fields of science and medicine and government, that you will keep an eye on the research. And if it becomes clear that that research is such that it convinces your board and your alumni that you will take the necessary steps to remove the turf and return to grass fields. Thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you. Counselor Gannon.
Okay, I have my mic on. And the, this is my first time being a council member. I was not a council member last year, but not only do I want to thank BBNN for making this opportunity, but also the kind stewardship of David Barnett and his team at Mount Auburn for deciding that this was an appropriate use for the property as opposed to other properties that, you know, may have, as others spoke, may have generated taxes for the town, but this presents such a multi-generational opportunity that it's astounding that we have such an opportunity in mind. So, thank you not only to BBNN, but to the wise stewardship of David Barnett and his team at Mount Auburn Cemetery. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any other comments? Counselor Baze.
Hi, thank you. I too will be voting for it and I am very excited about it. I do echo some of Counselor Palumba's concerns. So, if, you know, I understand, because I was at many, many meetings where we discussed artificial turf when we were looking at Victory Field. So, I do understand the pros and the cons and, you know, and this town decided we did not want artificial turf after all was said and done. But the other question was, you know, you guys are going to be using this primarily during the day. Are you putting lighting in the field? Because, and if so, what kind of lighting? Is it dark sky compliant? Would it interfere with neighbors? I'm just wondering about lighting.
Yes, our plan is to, just as you guys have done with Philippiello, you're putting new lights in there right now. We would absolutely, obviously, we're going to have to work through that, but our plan is to do lighting. Frankly, the amount of time BBNN will be using the lights will pale in comparison to the amount of time that Watertown will be using the lights as we play very few evening games. That being said, we've already had conversations. You guys have done a lot of research on what lights make sense for Philippiello. It'd be silly to reinvent the wheel there. So, the idea is to work collaboratively with all the work that you've done and to light the field. Again, I think that the value of having those lit in terms of the hours that mostly Watertown could use it, it seems like it would be worth it to all of us.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Counselor Pitirelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did want to say that I'm very excited to be voting for this memorandum of understanding tonight. It's very exciting for the Town of Watertown that we can actually, it's no mystery to anybody, there's been lots of development in Watertown, but the ability to take six and a half acre site and make it into open recreational space is very exciting. I also want to thank the town, BBNN, and the cemetery. Things in government tend to move very slowly. Plans tend to take a very, very long time. This is moving despite COVID-19 at lightning speed. And like a year ago, we talked about it would be a great idea if this could happen and here we are, a year later, actually, voting on a memorandum of understanding. That is virtually unheard of and I really want to congratulate Mr. Manager and his team at the Town of Watertown, Dr. Price at BBNN, and Mr. Barnett, Dr. Barnett at the Mount Auburn Cemetery, for actually making this happen. I know it took a lot of people, there were a lot of hard choices to make, but it really is astounding and the people of Watertown should know that this, you know, projects take years, you know, five, three, four, five, six years to get done. This is like, here we are, a year later, getting it done. So, thank you.
Any other comments? I just want to touch on something Counselor Baze said in a conversation that I did have at one point with the manager. We are talking about, and the lights, we were talking about, and I think Dr. Price agreed to the fact that we will be, they will be looking at the dark sky lighting guidelines in order to pursue putting the lights on the field. So, I do think that that was, that is definitely part of it and I think that's an important piece when we do the lighting here. So, again, I don't see any other questions or comments. I want to say that this is, again, an exciting time and looking forward to breaking ground over here and for everybody that's involved. Counselor Feltonner had a question.
Sorry, my button's being a little slow there. Just to clarify, it seems, I know, you know, some details will still be worked out and based on the construction of the schools and that kind of thing. But my understanding is there is sensitivity to Watertown teams that are already using the fields after schools and balancing that out of access to Philippiello and your access. So, if someone could just reiterate maybe how that is going to work to alleviate some public concerns, that would be great.
I would just echo, we've already developed a fantastic working relationship with the Parks and Recreation Department in Watertown. Lots of joint use in anticipation of this long-term partnership. Of course, we would not want to displace anyone on Philippiello Park. That's not our desire. We've already talked about it. You know, I would say, you know, so our seasons are kind of like 18 weeks in the fall and maybe 16 weeks in the spring. So, you're not talking about a huge amount of time. However, when we do, when our seasons, it's a little more intense. So, I don't anticipate any issues. We've been using some of the fields actually, you know, after school. I'm over there often and maybe residents of Watertown have seen me walking, wistfully hoping this would come through. I don't anticipate a huge amount of displacing and we would obviously not displace anyone who's over there right now. That's not the idea of this. So, anything to add on Watertown side? I don't anticipate this being a problem and that's definitely not our intent in any way.
Are there any other comments? I see there is a hand up in the audience, but unfortunately, this is not a public hearing. You're going to have to wait to make your comments in the final public forum section of the agenda. So, I have a motion in a second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Woodland.
Yes.
Counselor Baze.
Yes.
Counselor Donato.
Yes.
Counselor Feltonner.
Yes.
Counselor Gannon.
Yes.
Counselor Canelis.
Yes.
Counselor Palumba.
Yes.
Counselor Pitirelli.
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you very much. Thanks to all.
Thank you all.
The next item on the agenda is item 8A, which is a resolution approving the acceptance and expenditure of gift of funds totaling $1,921.21 graciously donated to honor the memory of the late Mr. David Hoffman. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. We forward correspondence from Mrs. Santola, Director of Recreation, indicating the Recreation Department has received donations of 31 checks totaling $1,921.21 in memory of Mr. David Hoffman. As indicated in Mrs. Santola's correspondence, it's the wishes of the Hoffman family that the Recreation Department use the money for financial support for Watertown families in need. As you know, Mr. President, members of the council, pursuant to Past General Laws, Chapter 4453A, any expenditure of gifts or funds need the approval of the town manager and the Town Council. Therefore, I respectfully ask your favorable consideration of the resolution approving the acceptance and the expenditure of gift of funds totaling $1,921.21 in memory of Mr. David Hoffman. Mr. President.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on the resolution, please?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the acceptance of the gift of funds of $1,921.21.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Baze.
Yes. Sorry.
Counselor Donato.
Yes.
Counselor Feltonner.
Yes.
Counselor Gannon.
Yes.
Counselor Canelis.
Yes.
Counselor Palumba.
Yes.
Counselor Pitirelli.
Yes.
Counselor Woodland.
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is 8B, which is a resolution authorizing a transfer to the fiscal year 2021 Fire Department indemnification account. Mr. Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Correspondence was forwarded from Fire Chief Robert J. Quinn regarding the need for additional funding of the Fire Department indemnification account. The proposed transfer for you this evening would be from the fiscal year 2021 Town Council Reserve to the fiscal year 2021 Fire Indemnification Account. As indicated in Chief Quinn's correspondence, there've had some firefighters that incurred work-related injuries that have required surgery and both surgery, shoulder surgery and another needed back surgery. So, in essence, that's the need, if you will, Mr. President, members of the council, the request for additional funding. Chief Quinn is available and is with us this evening, but again, I ask for your favorable consideration of the proposed transfer of $25,000 for the additional funding of the Fire Department Indemnification Account. Mr. President.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on the transfer, please?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the transfer of $25,000 for the Fire Department Indemnification.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Feltonner.
Yes, I'm very sorry to hear about these injuries and of course, I support this transfer. I'm just wondering, I'm sure, you know, you can't account for, anticipate all cases, but I didn't know if there were any, any situations that'd evaluate that improve the safety or if it's just pure accident or, you know, things that could be prevented in the future.
Well, we're continuously working on that to help wellness and safety of the firefighters, but unfortunately, the physical job we're in sometimes, things just happens and, you know, we've had two serious injuries on top of several minor injuries that have just increased our costs. And, but I think, you know, for the most part, we're doing very well.
Thank you. My best to you and the department.
Any other questions or comments? Can I get a roll call on the transfer, please?
Counselor Donato.
Yes.
Counselor Feltonner.
Yes.
Counselor Gannon.
Yes.
Counselor Canelis.
Yes.
Counselor Palumba.
Yes.
Counselor Pitirelli.
Yes.
Counselor Woodland.
Yes.
Counselor Baze.
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a resolution, HC, a resolution authorizing a transfer of funds in the amount of $66,068 from the fiscal year 2021 Debt Retirement Authorized Unissued Account to the fiscal year 2021 Transfer to Capital Projects, Public Buildings, Vehicles Account in order to move forward with the purchase of two tractor-like snow blowers for the sidewalks around the schools. Mr. Manager.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. The presentation tonight will be, I'll provide an opening remarks and then turn the presentation over to Ms. Laurie Cable, the Director of Public Buildings, to discuss the need for the, to purchase the two tractor-like snow blowers for the sidewalks around the school. But by way of background, as you recall, I stated in the fiscal year 2021 budget message, there was my intention to bring forward proposed loan orders for various capital equipment items contained in the fiscal year 2021 Capital Improvement Program. The acquisition of these proposed items is consistent in one of the town's priorities of not deferring maintenance and/or recognition of cost of capital equipment, facilities and infrastructure to future years. We forward correspondence from Ms. Cable regarding a significant amount of backup materials on the two tractor-like snow blowers. What I'd like to do at this point, Mr. President and members of councils, is have Ms. Cable speak to the need for it and kind of going over the proposed purchase of the two commercial snow blowers subsequent to Ms. Cable's presentation. I would speak on the proposed financing of the acquisition of the two tractor-like snow blowers. So, Mr. President, members of the council, we bring forward Ms. Laurie Cable, the Director of Public Buildings.
Welcome, Laurie.
Thank you. My computer's going in and out, so hopefully I can get through this, but I apologize if that happens. You know, doing the sidewalks and snow around the schools is a very, very daunting task and we have a lot of challenges with that, you know. Primarily, we're still working on getting vehicles out of our parking lots and we're trying to really open the schools. Custodians normally come in at 6:30 and staff starts coming in around 7 o'clock. So, these vehicles are similar to what DPWs, DPW uses. They're really like tractor-looking, um, uh, snow blowers. They sit in it, there's a, there's a, there's a caddy they can sit in and they pretty much go around in the sidewalks. So, what we are looking at is, we're looking at purchasing two of these. And what we will do is we will put one of them in the Hasmer and one of them in the high school. And the only reason that we've chosen those schools over other schools is because they have garages that we can actually store those in. Hopefully, in the new schools, we'll have that. We'll put them in here, we'll try these two ones out and we'll see how it works. So, what this really will do is this will save time for our custodians. It will prevent a lot of, a lot of, prevent injuries. But we also have, right now, the custodians are not required really to come in overtime. Everything is completely voluntary. And so, we actually have a lot of custodians that call out during snow, um, snow events, which also makes it very daunting. So, this is, this is one way that they will, they will come and they will really, you know, want to remove snow or at least help us remove snow and motivate them because they will be a little bit more comfortable and they'll get it done a little bit faster. So, what we're doing is we're asking for you to approve our first two of these tractors to go around the Hasmer and around the high school so that we can, we can do things safely and more.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. As indicated in the correspondence, the agenda writing correspondence, the intent was to bring forward a proposed loan order for the purchase of the two commercial snow blowers. At this time, monies are available to fund the purchase from the debt retirement authorized unissued account as a result of receiving a more favorable interest rate on the 15.6 million, 20-year general obligation municipal purpose bond alone of 2020 bonds that were issued in June of 2020. As have indicated in the past, the utilization of unspent debt retirement account monies for the acquisition- for the acquisition of capital equipment is consistent with the Honorable Town Council's ongoing budget policy guideline to make annual capital expenditures and equal to at least seven and a half to eight percent of the operating budget in order to maintain and improve its infrastructure facilities and equipment. So therefore, I respectfully ask you a favorable consideration of the proposed transfer. The transfer would be $66,068 and it would be from the fiscal year 2021 Debt Retirement Authorized Unissued and to the fiscal year 2021 Transfer to Capital Projects, Public Building Vehicles. Mr. President.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on the transfer, please?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the transfer of $66,068 for the purchase of the two tractor snow blowers for sidewalks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Canelus.
Thank you. I will be supporting this this evening, but I think there should be consideration to be able to share these pieces of equipment amongst buildings. There is consideration here for additional purchases and there are limitations for storage and talks about a possible purchase of a trailer to be able to transport. I think we should really be looking at means of transporting this type of equipment with, with existing equipment that we might have at DPW, whether there's a flatbed where this equipment can be placed and brought to other areas within the community. These are expensive pieces of equipment and I think they, they should be multitasking and not necessarily just stored at one particular location to service only the Hosmer and the high school. Thank you.
Counselor Felton.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this, this is great. It's always, as you mentioned, a lot of complaints about snow removal around the school. So it's good to see that we're moving forward in that. I guess I was curious, you did lay out, as Counselor Canelus alluded to, that it could be used in other places in town, potentially in the future, depending on moving them, being able to move them around. So it sounds like they could potentially be used on community paths or, I'm assuming, other sidewalks in town that public owns that, you know, aren't necessarily fronted at a residence place. So I'm kind of wondering, do we have a sense of what the lifespan is of these tractors?
Um, yes, they're about the same as a car. So they, they go anywhere between, you know, 10, 12 years about is what they're saying. Does preventative maintenance, but it's relatively easy. We can do that in-house. They do go about 12 miles an hour. So there's the slow, but they can travel if we needed to. We have been kind of thinking about how they could work with, with other buildings in the towns. And really, it kind of goes down to timing because we were looking at like sharing them between schools, but we can't wait until one school is done in order to get another school going. Certainly, we could look at, you know, when the schools are done, are there other sidewalks that we need help with? And we have to transfer that over to DPW because we would not have the manpower necessarily to use these at other places, but the machine or the tractor definitely could be. They also come with a lot of different parts. This one, we're only asking for a snow blower, but there's a sweeper that can be used for dust, leaves in the spring. There's, there's an ice spreader that can be added to the, an ice melt spreader that can be added to the back. There's a lot of other things that we can do. So we're just starting with step one. But we do think that there's probably some growth that we and DPW could probably share in the future once we kind of, kind of, kind of figure it out with them.
Any other questions or comments?
The lifespan is reassuring that we have some time to look at potential future. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions or comments? I do think to the previous two counselors' points, if possible, it would be great that we could take the opportunity in case after everything is done and the need arises somewhere else that we should continue to look at that. But I think this is a good step. I think we need to do this. I think it's going to make everyone's life a lot easier and the schools will be cleaned up much quicker than they have potentially in the past. So we have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Felton.
Yes.
Counselor Gannon.
Yes.
Counselor Canelus.
Yes.
Counselor Palomba.
Yes.
Counselor Picciarelli.
Yes.
Counselor Woodland.
Yes.
Counselor Baze.
Yes.
Counselor Donato.
Yes.
President Sideris.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Laurie. Next item on the agenda is committee reports. And nine A is the Committee on Budget and Fiscal Oversight Report Regarding Recommendations to the Town Council on the FY '22 Budget Policy Guidelines. Counselor Picciarelli is the chair. Counselor Picciarelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the committee had three meetings, November 2nd, November 9th, November 16th. We started on November 2nd. For all three meetings, myself is the chair, Counselor Canelus, the vice chair, Counselor Donato is the secretary, the town manager, the town auditor and the, Mr. McGinn, the director of community development planning and assistant town manager were present at all the meetings. At the first meeting, also, Council President Sideris, Counselor Baze, Counselor Felton, Counselor Gannon and Counselor Woodland were there, plus many members of the public. So the purpose of these three meetings is to review the input from the counselors and make recommendations to the town council on the fiscal year '22 Budget Policy Guidelines. I had sent instructions to counselors explaining that the committee's task is not to decide whether each request is a good idea or not. Rather, the committee acts as an editor to take input from nine counselors and synthesize it into a concise, actionable document for the manager. The committee may decide to defer or exclude a request because it, A, requires policy direction from the council before the manager can include it in the operating budget; B, substantially complete; C, is too ambiguous to be included in the operating budget; D, is part of the Capital Improvement Program and not the operating budget; E, is within the authority of another body who has not weighed in; or F, overlaps with other existing goals or requests. To facilitate the process, I arranged all the requests from each counselor in the order received into a worksheet for the committee to use. The town council also received 25 emails from residents affiliated with Sunrise, Watertown or related groups containing a list of requests for the Budget Policy Guidelines. The committee considered these and developed a specific reply to send at the end of the process. So we worked our way, the first meeting, through the most of the items and then we tabled it due to lateness of the hour and adjourned at 9:38 PM. We reconvened on November 9th. So we were there also, November 9th, Counselor Baze, Counselor Felton, Counselor Gannon and Counselor Woodland were there, plus many members of the public. So I began, so there was, first of all, and there was a lot of questions about the process from members of the public. So I reiterated the purpose of this document is direction from the town council to the town manager to develop budgetary goals in the town budget for fiscal year '22. And it was not intended to set the town council's legislative agenda. These meetings that are edited document based on inputs submitted by counselors and they are not to develop new priorities or set policy. So I made some clarifying points. We had about 40-minute discussion about the policy, so, which is summarized in these seven points. Number one, under Watertown's form of government, the town council sets the policy, not the town manager. Number two, the charter enables the council to develop budget policy guidelines for the manager. Number three, the manager creates the budget with funding for the priorities to be voted by the council. Number four, for the policy to be set by the council, it needs a simple majority vote. Number five, the most common way for policy to be developed is to refer a matter to committee, who can then research the issue, get input from the staff and the council and the public, and publish a report with action items to be voted by the full town council. Number six, a referral to the committee can happen anytime and does not need to wait for the budget process. And number seven, if a council brings forward a new idea during the budget policy guideline process, which the town council has not yet voted on its policy, then the Budget and Fiscal Oversight Committee will recommend to be referred to the relevant committee to develop policy guidance. So the committee resumed where it left off and completed its review of the tabled items on the, on the second night. We adjourned at 8:46 PM and reconvened on Monday, November 16th at 6:30. The committee was there. Also were Counselor Baze and Counselor Gannon. The committee reviewed, did a final review of the fiscal year '22 Budget Policy Guidelines. The summary of all the discussions is included in the worksheet, which is attached to the report. So Counselor Canelus made a motion, seconded by Counselor Donato, that the committee recommends town council adopt the fiscal year '22 Budget Policy Guidelines as drafted. That was unanimous. The final budget policy guidelines will be ranked by the town council after they're approved. The, the order in which they are now reflects last year's priority ranking and the timing of when the new requests are received. So that will be at the end of this process. Each counselor will be filling out a ranking sheet and returning it to me to sort them the proper priority. Next, the committee took up suggestive referrals for new issues raised by counselors that were not included in the budget policy guidelines for reasons noted above. So Counselor Canelus made a motion, seconded by Counselor Donato, that the committee recommends a referral to the Human Services Committee to work with staff to explore expanding the capacity of the Health Department and determine what the unmet need is and then determine if the unmet need can be met within the existing departmental budget or if additional resources are needed. That was voted unanimously on a roll call vote. And then the second one was Counselor Canelus made a motion, seconded by Counselor Donato, that the committee recommends a referral to the Personnel and Town Organization Committee to work with staff to explore issues of diversity, equity and inclusion within Watertown government and determine what the unmet need is and then determine if the unmet need can be met within the existing departmental budget or if additional resources are needed. That was also voted on a unanimous roll call vote. Finally, the committee discussed a draft response to the Sunrise, Watertown Extinction Rebellion and Uplift Watertown emails that were received. The committee spent some time going through responses to that and we finalized that. And Counselor Canelus made a motion, seconded by Counselor Donato, that the committee authorizes the chair to send the reply to each email received. And that was voted on a unanimous roll call vote. So, and that meeting adjourned at about 8 o'clock on the third evening. So that's the, the report. And, Mr. President, did you want me to read the budget, the final budget pilot?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, so for the public. So for the approval by the town council, the first items. This is for guidance to the manager to develop budgetary goals and the town budget for fiscal year '22. The first section is cost savings/revenues. The town council believes the identification of cost savings or new revenues should be a precondition to additional expenditures to this end. In developing the fiscal year '22 budget, the town manager should, A, continue to proceed with the guidelines of the strategic framework for economic development with a long-term goal to promote a diversified and growing tax base; B, continue pursuing mitigation money and other measures for large-scale projects; C, consider filing additional applications to all applicable federal and Commonwealth programs and grants, including but not limited to the Commonwealth's Community Compact Program, the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, the Green Communities Program, the Housing Choice Program, the community-oriented policing grant; and D, actively seek payment of lieu-of-tax agreements with each nonprofit organization owning or purchasing property in Watertown. The second section is two program enhancements and expenditures. To the extent that resources allow, in light of the financial policies stated above and adhering to the principle of make, of first identifying cost savings and/or new revenues, the following program enhancements and if necessary, new expenditures should receive priority in the fiscal year '22 budget. Education program enhancements and expenditures should be considered subsequently in light of recommendations of the school committee. So, A, enhance the capabilities of the town manager's office with consideration given to creating a deputy town manager position as previously recommended in the Division of Local Services Financial Management Review with the responsibilities to include managing communication content and enhancing public engagement and other duties as assigned. B, continue support for Building for the Future Initiative funding in collaboration with the School Building Committee for the Three Elementary Schools project and for the MSBA High School project with proposed debt exclusion funding in conjunction with outreach efforts to the community by the school committee. C, improve the operational efficiency, flexibility and capability of the Public Works Department to meet the town's growing needs to manage contractors, respond to work order requests, oversee development projects, plan and implement infrastructure improvements, improve communications to residents about road construction, comply with the Mass DEP 2030 Solid Waste Management Plan and maintain complete street infrastructure. Consider what technology platforms are needed to support the department. D, with the hiring of the Chief Information Officer, carry out the remaining recommendations of the townwide information technology assessment to review the acquisition, distribution and management of IT resources, including staffing levels and positions required to support the town's IT environment, improve the functionality of the town's website and improve communications with residents. E, continue to work collaboratively with the Watertown Public Schools to develop a comprehensive multi-year education budget that assures sustainable funding for our schools and the successful education of our children. In consideration of the ongoing impacts of COVID-19 on the town's budget, seek to accommodate a fiscal year '22 education appropriation that will provide level service funding for our schools. F, continue to work with the Watertown Transportation Management Association to identify sustainable sources of funding, including tax revenue if necessary, for the pilot shuttle bus program. G, update the five-year plan and funding schedule for the integrated improvement of the town's streets and sidewalks, water, sewer, stormwater, infrastructure and underground utilities. The plan should show the status of ongoing projects, identify future projects, including those with no funding source, and include upgrade of all water meters. Identify sources of stormwater and sewage outflows to the Charles River in coordination with water, sewer, stormwater projects and underground utility projects. H, continue to enhance the capabilities of the Department of Community Development and Planning by adding resources and/or redeploying additional resources. I, continue to enhance the capabilities of the Department of Public Works Forestry Department by adding resources and/or redeploying additional resources for improving Watertown's public shade trees and increasing the town's overall tree canopy by, one, developing a robust data collection process for public shade trees in Watertown; and, two, analyzing the data to determine an action plan and to seek collaboration and partnership opportunities with community groups such as trees for Watertown. J, based on final policy direction to be developed by the town council, develop a budgetary plan to meet the identified needs for acquisition of land for open space and/or recreation use, including proposals submitted to the Community Preservation Committee. K, based on final town council policy direction, develop a policy, a budgetary plan to meet the identified need for DPW staging space. L, implement the anticipated public art plan and identify funding sources. And M, finalize reuse of the former North Branch Library and the former police station contingent upon discussions with the school department. So that's, Mr. President, that's the report.
Thank you, Counselor Picciarelli, for a very well-done report and to the committee for a very long A very long and. Very fruitful discussion during the three meetings. So first of all, I need a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion on the report? Councilor Kudalas.
Thank you. I I would be remiss if I didn't. Extend major kudos to Council Pitcherelli. I I hope that folks understand how much time and effort has gone into this document. The committee spent in excess of seven hours in. In open session. Council Pitcherelli did double, if not triple, that amount of time. Outside of the public meeting to actually make it easier for everybody in attendance at the meetings. To function properly and be able to discuss the topics before us. Formatting all of the material, responding to all the comments. It is just a tremendous amount of work and he should be commended and also to Counselor Donato for being part of the process. Thank you all, and thank you for allowing me to also be part of the committee.
Council Donato.
I I too would like to echo Council Kanelis's point. This is a tricky enough process. Outside of the pandemic, but host all three of these meetings via Zoom certainly complicated the task. Council Pitcherelli did. Also great. Budget meetings, budget priority guidelines of meetings I've attended over the years, the meetings were by far the most attended by residents of the public. I thought they added a lot. Brought up a lot of good ideas that resulted in some of the referrals that we see tonight. Many thanks to Counselor Pitcherelli.
Thank you, Council Donato. Council Paloma.
Yeah, I'm just not sure where this. I I wanted to respond or ask a couple of quick questions, make a statement regarding the budget guideline.
That's this is the no, this is afterwards. This is just for the reporters.
Okay.
Are there any other comments on the report? Can I get a roll call, please?
Council Gannon.
Yes.
Council Kanelis.
Yes.
Council Palomba.
Yes.
Council Pitcherelli.
Yes.
Council Woodland.
Yes.
Council Bays.
Yes.
Councilor Donato.
Yes.
Council Feltnor.
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. The first action item, I need a motion that the council adopt the F Y twenty two budget policy guidelines as drafted.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Council Paloma, this is your opportunity.
Thank you, thank you. I just a couple of things. Obviously, I had some vested interest in some of these that didn't make it to through the committee, so I just want to mention. I was a little disappointed that on page three. There was a number of request efforts to try to raise additional revenue. But none of them seem to be able to make it through to the. Through the committee, but I did want to say that I don't disagree with the committee. That my suggestion about a home will petition not be submitted to the Town Council. To the town manager for the possibility of exploration. I do think that's a valid reason, a valid request. And so I just want to raise my point of disagreement with the committee on that. I also would like to ask, just in terms of. On the new items that we had in terms of new spending suggestions. Excuse me, I'm just going to the page. I want to note on page ten. I made a request to consider hiring a recycling coordinator. You know, the Department of Public Works says they had recommended in their budget request of two thousand and twenty, F Y twenty one. I I don't just want to say, I think that the reference to number two C. Seems to me to be a catchall. And I didn't agree that my recommendation for. For a recycling coordinator just be put into two C, which seems like it includes everything. It does no reference specifically to a recycling coordinator. There is reference to the Mass D E P's two thirty twenty thirty solid waste program, but. This was a particular request about a particular staff staff person. That seems to me to be more than what was included here. It doesn't seem to belong in two C. Given that that seems to be much broader than what I was speaking of. And then I have just a general question. I I a number of our of these suggestions were listed and the comment was. Requires policy guidelines from the Town Council. And I I'm just trying to get up my head around it. At some of the other, and I'll give you an example, and number two K, and number two M. Those are already existing and. It says based on final policy direction to be developed by the council, so I'm a little concerned of why those can exist there. But requests, other requests are not included because. There is a decision by the committee that they require policy guidelines from the Town Council, and yet we have policy guidelines. Yet to be developed by the council and those got those items like one like two K and two M are included. So I just wanted to note to note that. And. I think that's it. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council Paloma. Any other comments on the budget policy guidelines? Seeing none, can I get a roll call, please? Oh, can Council Woodland, sorry.
No worries. I I guess I just wanted to to add that. I really appreciated a lot of folks showing up to the first two meetings, a lot of new folks to the process. I think it was important that the committee was able to reiterate what the process is for. How a initiative turns into a referral. Which goes to committee, which gets looked at and evaluated, which goes back to the council. For final consideration before it becomes considered as a budget priority guideline. So I think it was really nice to work with a lot of new folks to the process to. Reiterate exactly the A to Z for how things get included for budget consideration for the next fiscal year. Yeah, I think it was helpful for everyone in the room, including counselors, to to see that process and understand exactly why things are included and why things aren't. I would definitely encourage. My colleagues, and I say this, I think every year. Or at least I say it when I talk to residents, when they want to know more about how things get done in Watertown and the processes that we go through to evaluate different initiatives. I say these are the most important meetings of the year. These meetings. So if there are things that are are submitted for inclusion. I really think it's incumbent upon the council and folks that are looking to get involved to attend these meetings. And to discuss these issues. Thank you.
Council Gannon.
I'm sorry, I had my, I thought I lowered my hand.
No problem, no problem. I there are no other comments. I also want to echo Council Woodland and Council Pitcherelli and others' comments who are. Many, many people that joined for the first time and we all got. Emails from a lot of them, and I really appreciate the fact that now we have more people that are starting to participate. And I think that's an important part of this process. And I think it's a good, and and there were a lot of younger people, and I think it's a good education. As to how we tried to work through things in a municipal government setting. And so I'm really, I was very happy to see that, very happy the way that the committee was able to handle the questions and comments. And I think it's a good sign going forward that we will, you know, looking forward to having additional people participate in these types of meetings. So can I get a roll, Council Feltnor?
Uh, yeah, I guess I I still feel a little confused. Maybe I need to do some homework, but just why the public art. Stands out on its own there and is not under enhancing, you know, part of enhancing the. Department of Community Development and Planning. Especially as the, you know, the Art Committee is not a formal town committee. So we don't have to discuss it now. I just. I just wanted to to make that comment and. Know that I do support the community development and art. Community development and planning. And and support public art too, but I'm a little confused. It it seems like we have a little bit inconsistency on on some of these. Guidelines, I think, to Counselor Palmas' point, it can be a little confusing on. How it determine at what stage policy direction has been given and is made then made into a guideline and. Whether it's its own category or falls within a department. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Council Bays.
Well, I'm I'm just, it's more of a process question. So Counselor Palomba and Counselor Feltnor had questions. But nobody's answering them. So when do, how can we?
Council Bays, they said that they were they were making statements and they were fine without getting an answer back.
Okay, I was just one. Okay, I didn't realize that. I I heard I heard Counselor Feltnor say that. I did not hear Counselor Palmas say that. So that's what what I was wondering. Okay.
Those were his comments.
Okay.
Council Paloma.
Thank you. Yes, I did. I didn't. I didn't expect a response to those comments. They, I I think this is my eleventh year of going through this process. And I I have a pretty good sense whether I attend the meeting or not, how the process unfolds. And what potential funding, cost savings and revenue increases. Will move forward and what ones won't, and what new ideas for spending will move forward. So I I do want to say that I didn't expect any questions, but I do also want to say that. I have a very familiar with this process, having been sitting through it for now, my eleventh year. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Can I get a roll call, please?
Council Kanelis.
Yes.
Council Palomba.
Yes.
Council Pitcherelli.
Yes.
Council Woodland.
Yes.
Council Bays.
Yes.
Council Donato.
Yes.
Council Feltnor.
Yes.
Council Gannon.
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. Can I get a motion on the second item, which would be to refer to Human Services? To work with the staff to explore expanding the capacity of the Health Department. And determine what the unmet need is and then determine if the unmet need can be met within the existing departmental budget. Or if additional resources are needed.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Council Donato.
Thank you, Mr. President. I I don't recall if this was part of the committee's work in the past, but. Where there was so much in interest and involvement by residents. You know, I just want to say, I think that he thought it made sense to take the, you know, extra step of formalizing. These referrals as part of this committee report to make sure that items that residents were very concerned about. Did not end here and that they would be referred to committee. Or more thoroughly in the future. So just I I thought that was a great development of this year.
Thank you, Council Gannon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Council Donato stole my thunder a little bit, but I wanted to echo his comments about. The new people involved in the process that a lot of their concerns. Such as need for social workers, addiction counseling on the part of the town. Will be addressed at the future Human Services Committee meeting and and those involved in the process, I would welcome you. To attend that meeting. I'm also a member and look forward to future engagement for the newer people involved in the process. I welcome you to. Keep in touch and to attend the meetings with all the gusto you've attended prior meetings. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, Council Paloma?
Thank you. I I wonder if it's possible to make up, this would actually refer to both this item and the following item, but. To make a friendly amendment that the. The at the. The budget requests, the new items that they at least be included in the in the. In the referral so that I think I've made a couple of ones about an additional social worker and. I made one about substance use services and that it'd be nice if if we could, in addition, this is such a such a general broad topic that's put out here. Where it in in essence, what was presented to the committee were more succinct specifics. So is it possible to include in the. In the referral reference to the specific items that were mentioned in the budget guidelines?
I I would respectfully suggest that this, the committee voted this particular action item. And I don't think there's anything that precludes the committees from taking up those items when they convene these meetings. I I don't see that that it's necessary. Attorney Rich is agreeing with me, I think. So I don't think it's necessary that there be a specific additional referral. All those items that you referenced can be done. Where you are the committee chair of Human Services, you're welcome to bring those issues as part of the discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments on this referral? Can I get a roll call, please?
Council Palomba.
Yes.
Council Pitcherelli.
Yes.
Council Woodland.
Yes.
Council Bays.
Yes.
Council Donato.
Yes.
Council Feltnor.
Yes.
Council Gannon.
Yes.
Council Kanelis.
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes. The next referral would be to the Personnel and Town Organization Committee to work with staff. To explore issues of diversity, equity and inclusion within Watertown Government. And determine what the unmet need is and then determine if the unmet need can be met within the existing departmental budget. Or if additional resources are needed.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, can I get a roll call, please?
Council Pitcherelli.
Yes.
Council Woodland.
Yes.
Council Bays.
Yes.
Council Donato.
Yes.
Council Feltnor.
Yes.
Council Gannon.
Yes.
Council Kanelis.
Yes.
Council Palomba.
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. Council Pitcherelli, you had a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So just a couple of things. First. Setting budget pile policy guidelines is something that's unique to our former government and that's. I say this every year, just so that, you know, the public knows that, you know, in a city with a mayor, this this doesn't happen. The mayor gets to create the budget. All by herself or himself. But because. Under our former government, the Town Council is the policymaking body. We actually get to set the policy goals for the manager to include in the budget. So that. That's number one. That's sort of a, you know, not very common in the Commonwealth. The second thing is having, this is now my thirteenth year. On the council and I will say echoing what Council Donato said that. Doing this by Zoom was challenging. But I actually think this was the best year we've ever had in terms of doing the process. We had eight counselors, almost the entire council was there participating. We had, depending on the evening, you know, somewhere between fifteen and thirty members of the public there. Who spoke on some of the issues, spoke very eloquently. And as we went through each item, we had some really good discussions and we sort of hammered out the language to sort of. Try to get it right. And I do want to thank everyone and particularly, you know, you know, we had, you know, Council Bays, Counselor Feltnor, Council Gannon, Council Woodland. Spent a lot of time at these meetings participating and and it was really, I think it was a really great process. I really want to thank the entire council, you know, my both my my two committee members who put in a lot of work. But also the rest of the council who participated and and I'm actually really. I'm really happy with the way these came out this year, and I just wanted to thank everybody who who participated. So I hope you all felt the same way. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, and you will be sending out the things for rankings.
Yes, and just so the ranking and I'll so a week from tonight, if you get it to me by five o'clock, I will email you the the sheets attached to the committee report, but I will send it again tonight.
Council Woodland, you have another comment?
Yeah, yes, I'm sorry. It's not nothing to do with the content. It's just, I really want to stress to the public at home. Administratively, how difficult the budget priority guideline process. administratively, how difficult the Budget Priority Guideline process is. It, there are so many that carry over from year to year and require a historic knowledge of what, how that issue started, how it's progressed, and how it's moving forward. And Counselor Picchirelli does a phenomenal job with that historical database, where we'll say, oh, how did we look at that issue last year? Then you will say, oh, I have the paper right here. This is what we said. And the organization of addressing each and every one of these in this methodical manner is, is really a an operational feat every single year, and even just putting together the minutes. Just tens and tens of pages, and so much work to do, and I can't stress enough, this is probably the most intensive preparation and reporting that you can do for a committee on the council every year, and Counselor Picchirelli does a phenomenal job every year. I know his committee members say that. I was on the committee for four years. Just hands down phenomenal job.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Committee on Public Works' report regarding recycling, organic and inorganic recycling, simple recycling, and a recycling survey. Counselor Picchirelli?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna ask Counselor Donato's vice chair to read the report, because I've already spoken enough tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. This is a committee report for the Committee on Public Works, which held a meeting on October 29, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. The meeting, in accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law relating to the 2020 COVID emergency, was conducted by Zoom and televised live by WCA. Attending were Chair Counselor Picchirelli, myself as vice chair, Counselor Palumba as secretary. Also in attendance were Counselor Baze, Counselor Woodland, school committee member David Stokes, Judy Fallows from the Watertown School Department, members of the town's Environment and Energy Efficiency Committee, Meredith Fields and Emma Clement, members of Watertown Faces Climate Change, Jolly Taggart, Pat Rathbone, Rick Kalish, Lissa Gifford, Helen Susu, Ernesta, excuse me, Ernesta Kreshkavis, and Watertown resident Eileen Zubrowski. Counselor Picchirelli began by stating that the purpose of the meeting was to discuss, one, a cost benefit analysis on organic and inorganic waste recycling, and develop policy guidance for the town council to approve with consideration given to establishing a volunteer advisory committee. Two, participation in a simple, simple recycling or like program, and three, conducting a recycling survey with Republic Services. Counselor Picchirelli noted that Matt Schuman from the Department of Public Works had a last minute conflict and was not able to attend. Therefore, the committee would not be accepting any motions that related to requests of the department. Provide some context for the discussion of the first part of Item One. Counselor Picchirelli referred to the Commonwealth's draft 2030 Solid Waste Master Plan. The plan calls for a 30% reduction of solid waste from 5.7 million tons to 4 million tons by the year 2030, and a further reduction of 90% from 5.1 million tons to 570 tons by the year 2050. The link to a PowerPoint from the plan is hyperlinked and included in the minutes. There's also a hyperlink to the guide to the plan and related documents. It was noted that the town's five-year contract with Republic for the pickup of trash and recycling would expire on June 30, 2022, and that the town usually begins negotiations one year prior to expiration. The issue of organic food waste pickup was discussed in 2017 during the negotiation of the present contract, but it was felt that there was no market for, for food waste at that time. During the discussion that followed, a number of points of information were presented. Automated pickup and single stream recycling were established in Watertown in 2014 after study and research by the Department of Public Works, Committee on Public Works, the Recycling Advisory Committee, and others. Presently, Watertown pays a tipping fee of $77 per ton, which will increase to $87 per ton by the end of our five-year contract with Wheel Abraider, which operates an incinerator facility in Saugus. Food waste is often heavier than inorganic waste, and therefore, reducing the amount of food waste would reduce the tonnage of trash picked up. Removing food waste from the waste stream while continuing our single stream recycling could lead to the need for trash pickup every two weeks and recycling pickup every week. Pat Rathbone, who has been doing backyard composting for years, recently began curbside composting with a private hauler that accepts a range of compostable materials. She reported that her trash has been significantly reduced. I noted that my family also began curbside composting with a private hauler, and we have experienced a significant reduction in trash. Watertown's recyclables are delivered by Republic to a facility in Charlestown operated by Casella. Recyclable loads that are contaminated are not accepted and must be taken back. It was noted that the question of where our recyclables go was raised by Aaron Dushku in an email he sent to the committee. That email is attached as an exhibit to this report. Counselor Picchirelli introduced Judy Fallow, who reported on the work of an informal committee that has been investigating organic recycling. Attached to this committee report is a summary of the group's work and accompanying appendices. Key points from Ms. Fallows in the summary include, "The informal committee was composed of many of the same individuals who organized the November 3, 2019, public forum on composting. The group has been meeting during the late spring and summer of 2020. They have gathered information from Newton, Cambridge, and Arlington, each of which has a different composting program. They offered suggestions when considering an organic recycling program, including, A, the long run curbside programs are more likely to foster greater public participation, though initial drop off program may help to build the case for a curbside program. B, a municipality needs to carefully consider the pluses and minuses of aerobic and anaerobic disposal of combustible material. A municipality should also give careful consideration what is required of residents to participate, such as sorting, bagging, and storing of material. And D, an organic recycling program should not cost more than disposal of materials via the current solid waste disposal process. The design of private residences and public edifices can be, can enable and encourage the collection of compostable materials. The committee strongly supports the establishment of a pilot curbside program, as well as the creation of Watertown Recycling Committee modeled after the existing Watertown Environment and Energy Efficiency." Counselor Baze reminded the committee that the public forum took place almost a year ago from the night of this meeting, that it successfully brought together community leaders, activists, town representatives, all of whom, along with many in the audience, supported bringing organic recycling to Watertown. She also noted that she continues to receive emails from constituents voicing their support for a composting program. Counselor Picchirelli then moved to the second part of Item One, consideration of an establishment, of establishing an appointed voluntary recycling committee. What followed was a very long and intense dialogue. Many of the attendees favored creating an appointed recycling committee, including the organizational representatives present. Meredith Fields, the present chair of WE3C, spoke in favor and referred to a letter WE3C wrote to the town council that stated its support for an appointed recycling committee. He noted that addressing organic and inorganic recycling is a long-term project, and WEC3 does not have the bandwidth to take it on. The committee, committee report is a letter, is the letter that was submitted by WE3C. Counselor Picchirelli presented an alternative to creating an appointed recycling committee. He proposed the creation of a group of citizen recycling researchers that would work with the Committee on Public Works. These volunteers would be part of the committee, though not as voting members, participating in meetings and doing research that the committee needed to formulate policy that would be considered by the full town council. Following is only a summary of the key points offered in support of these two approaches. Please see the full discussion on WCA TV. He noted that Counselor Palumba offered a suggestion that if both approaches could occur simultaneously, the committee could vote to make a referral for the establishment of an appointed recycling committee for the Committee on Rules and Ordinances, particularly since there is an existing ordinance establishing a recycling advisory committee that could be amended. At the same time, the committee could elicit citizens, recycling researchers, to work with the committee. Majority of the committee did not support the proposal. Reasons offered in favor of creating a group of volunteer recycling researchers included, one, it could happen immediately, whereas a creation of an appointed recycling committee would take months. There would be a referral to Committee on Rules and Ordinances, one or more public meetings, a vote by the full town council, and eventually appointments by the town manager. Two, a group of volunteer recycling researchers would not be required to abide by the open meeting law, which would not be the case with an appointed recycling committee. Three, there are residents ready to be volunteers, including the possibility of enlisting the support of young people from the local Sunrise organization. And four, we need to move quickly, given that it will be soon, it will soon be time to negotiate a new trash and recycling contract. If we are interested in creating a pilot compost program, we must begin now. Reasons offered in favor of creating an appointed recycling committee included, one, an opportunity to be selected by a town manager. As a member of an appointed town committee would generate applicants highly committed to cycling committee's mission. Two, members would be more committed to the work if they saw themselves as an independent body, able to chart its own course of work. Three, the committee could undertake education and outreach tasks, such as organizing events, writing opinion pieces, et cetera, which would be critical to the successful inflammation, implementation of an organic recycling program, as well as other recycling programs, such as clothing slash material recycle. Four, the committee would be able to continue to address new developments and investigate funding opportunities regarding organic and inorganic recycling after the Committee on Public Works concludes its work. And five, the committee could coordinate with and complement the work of other appointed town committees, such as WE3C and the Stormwater Advisory Committee, as well as with community-based groups. Following the discussion, Counselor Picchirelli made the following motion. "The Public Works Committee will appoint volunteer recycling researchers who inform the committee on recycling best practices and waste diversion technologies, and to assist the committee in developing strategies to achieve Watertown's goal of reducing its municipal trash tonnage by 30% by the year 2030, as well as other goals outlined in the Massachusetts 2030 Solid Waste Master Plan." That motion passed three to zero. Counselor Woodland asked that items two and three be the first items discussed at the committee's next meeting. Counselor Picchirelli presented next steps for the committee, including eliciting recycling researchers and setting up monthly meetings. He also invited those present to become volunteer research, recycling researchers. Judy, Judy Fallows and Eileen Zubrowski agreed to become volunteers. Counselor Palumba made a motion to adjourn, which was seconded by myself, and that passed unanimously. Nothing. The meeting ended at approximately 9:00 p.m., and the minutes were prepared by Counselor Palumba. I just wanna thank him and acknowledge, very extensive.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, second.
I, I will say that that was a very, very comprehensive report. For someone that wasn't there, there was a lot of information available, so thank you. Any other comments on the report itself? Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Canelis?
Yes.
Counselor Palumba?
Yes.
Counselor Picchirelli?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is new business, any new business to come before the council? Counselor Felton?
Yeah, it's not new business. I guess I should maybe ask this during the report, but I would just say, I would echo Counselor Woods' suggestion that, that, you know, it's been a long time that we have not had any textile recycling in the recycling center. So I'm hopeful, I thought that was gonna be kind of an easy thing to get going. I know there's the pandemic, so I just wanted to comment that I support moving forward on some kind of textile recycling as we're able. Thanks.
Counselor Palumba, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I was going to make a motion to make a referral, and I failed to follow the council rules to put this on the agenda ahead of time. So I just wanna say that I will be making a motion for a referral to the Committee on Education and School Matters related to the racial-based harassment that one of our students received and is receiving, Leila Mawanda, Mawanda. And I will be making that to the committee for an, for discussion of that situation at our next meeting. I do say that I have contacted Superintendent Goldstone, per the council rules, noting that I was gonna make the referral, but I was reminded, thankfully, by Council President Sedaris that this needed to be put on the agenda prior to, to this. I apologize.
Do you see Attorney Rich has raised his hand, and I would recognize Attorney Rich, please?
Yes, just a brief comment through you, Mr. President. I'm a little concerned here. If I heard correctly, reference to a specific student and a specific student issue, and as the council should be aware, student records and matters involving students are highly confidential. So I do have a concern about an individual student being, being referenced publicly, but I also have a concern that matters involving students and the behavior of students and the monitoring of students is wholly a school function. In fact, it's, it's, it's really the, the domain of the school superintendent. The town council, and even the town administration, and even the school committee, really are not involved in those matters because of the extreme sensitivity of those matters and the significant privacy rights of students. There are extensive regulations addressing student, student rights in terms of privacy and their records. So I, I am a little concerned about a, a referral, especially where it references a specific student that, you know, the, the council may be stepping into areas that are not only outside of the authority of the town council, but maybe areas that involve the civil rights of, of students and issues that are specifically addressed by regulation and are matters to be addressed by the school superintendent. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Counselor Palumba?
Well, I just wanna know that the, I can eliminate the name of the student who was mentioned, but this is not something that is I'm bringing up for the first time. This individual was on Channel 25. She spoke directly to the issue of her own safety and to the issue of racial discrimination and racial-based harassment. She explained it very clearly. The issue has, is going to be the topic of a public meeting held by Superintendent Goldstone on December 3. She is holding a meeting just to discuss this particular situation and this particular incident. The incident is being, the incidents are being investigated by the department, by the Watertown Police Department, and by the Watertown School Department. It was my intention, based on a request from a resident, a, a couple in Watertown who asked me what, about this is an incident, whether the town council should make some statement regarding it. I figured that, I figured that the best way to do that, since we do have a committee on school, education and school matters, was to make a referral for a discussion of the situation. Now I can clearly, and I will, based on Attorney Rich's suggestion, I will re, rewrite the referral to such, in such a way as to eliminate the, the specific reference to the individual, and then I will submit it to Council President Sedaris.
Thank you, Counselor Palumba, and I will follow up offline with Attorney Rich as to how best to proceed.
Thank you.
Any other, any other new business to come before the council? Seeing none, request for information? Any requests for information? Counselor Palumba?
Thank you. I, I wanted to ask, I made a request back at the October 13 meeting, and it hasn't been fulfilled, so I just would like to repeat it if possible in preparation for my participation in the charter of the committee, which held its meeting the first week, week ago today. Of course, this was read on October 13. Of course, this was read on October 13. I request the following information, a copy of the ballot used in the November 1991 town election, a copy of the ballot used in the November 2001 town election, and a copy of the ballot used in the November 2011 town election. In addition, I requested copies of all materials distributed to registered voters in Watertown and or residents of Watertown prior to each of the elections noted above. And that was related, or information that was related to the Charter Review Committee or Commission. And just, so I would like that to be followed up on, please.
Thank you. Any other requests for information? Announcements? Counselor Pichorelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. So on next Monday, November 30 at 6:00 PM, there will be a Zoom meeting, the fifth community forum for the School Building Committee for the feasibility study of the high school. So this is your chance, members of the public, if you want to see where the School Building Committee is going with sort of the preliminary design and make comments. This is your opportunity to learn and participate. And the website, all of the plans are on the Building for the Future website. If you Google Watertown Building for the Future, you'll find it. Or if you go to the school website and click on Building for the Future, you will find it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Canelas.
Thank you. I publicly wanted to thank Gideon Schreiber. A few meetings ago, I asked for a tutorial as to how to access the Zoom meetings and how to bring material onto the screen. For some of us who are not as technically savvy as others, it's a little bit challenging to be here on your own and not being able to access all of the information. And this evening, I can say that I have the agenda up on the screen along with the Zoom meeting. So that's wonderful, and I thank Gideon. I know that he was on screen a little bit earlier, and maybe he'll be told about this. Also, some of you are aware of a verbal issue that transpired at the last Town Council Executive Session Meeting. I was going to make a statement this evening, but I'm going to bypass for now pending further review. And I wanted to thank everyone who has reached out to me to offer support. Thank you.
Counselor Feltnar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was going to make a similar announcement that Counselor Pichorelli made about the high school meeting. Comment, though, is I am unclear of how many people we actually have on that mailing list for the high school. It would be great to have that information. I'm really concerned that, I know that residents need to take the initiative, and we make announcements at council. But I am concerned that we really get public buy-in with our school building projects and would like to know who's following up and signed up, and are we able to do any outreach to more residents, particularly around the high school? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other requests or announcements? Or public forum, any member of the public that wish to be heard at this time? Seeing none, Counselor Pichorelli, are there any emails?
Mr. President, no, there are no emails.
I see a hand raised.
Okay, hold on. Please identify yourself, Aloria, for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two topics I'd like to speak to. Number one is, as a member of the public who is attending a lot of these meetings, I can never see who the public is. And we are never able to see the participants who may be part of these meetings. So how do we consider this a public meeting? You know, if we're meeting in town hall, I can go to the town hall and I can see who at least is in attendance. But with this format, I get to see our counselors and our town management, but have no idea of the public that is interested in a particular topic. This meeting is critical, the budget hearing is critical, the school building committee is critical, the charter review is critical, and this keeps coming up again and again. The second thing I'd like to talk about is the BBNN agreement. This property is worth a lot of money, as we all know. It's being bought by a not-for-profit. I guess my first question is, will pilots be discussed with BBNN? But my bigger question is, this is supposed to benefit Watertown as well. This will be an open space piece of property. It is not a green space piece of property. They are planning to put artificial turf down. Nobody goes to lie down on artificial turf with a book, nor play with a small child on artificial turf, particularly in the summer. When we're talking about climate change and heat and water and protection of our river, how does artificial turf fit into that picture? When Counselor Palomba spoke earlier about parents being upset, I would like to respectfully disagree. The community was upset. People of all ages use our green spaces, and as we know, they are quite limited in Watertown. Two, I'd like to talk about the issue of the fill, because there are various fills. So if the town council seeks to not address this issue, at least look at a standard of fill, because that is critical. Again, speaking about the Victory Field meetings that went on for over a year with a tremendous amount of work, one of the things we constantly heard is that our teams, the Watertown teams, were short on fields in this community. Yet here we are, giving away our fields at Filippalo every single day from 2:00 to 5:00 or 6:00 to BBNN. So what is it? Do we have enough fields, or do we not have enough fields? Because this needs to be resolved once and for all, especially when we're under school construction. Finally, number three, we are achieving higher and higher standards in this community all the time in terms of the environment. Dark skies was put in at Filippalo. Should we ever get to Victory Field Phase 2, dark skies lighting will go in there. And so why can we not raise the bar on people that are coming into our community, be they a private developer for a commercial property or now a nonprofit developer, getting a very, very sweet deal from Watertown in terms of tying their land to Filippalo's land? And what happens to the residents of Watertown, to the kids of Watertown, to the teams in Watertown? I'm really hot about this issue, as you can probably hear in my voice. I'm very upset that there was absolutely no public discussion. This was all done behind closed doors with a memorandum of understanding. Everybody's very happy, but again, the public has been left out of any context in this issue, and it's very disappointing to me. This is the first time I can honestly say I'm disappointed in this entire council, and that's a very hard thing for me to say.
Thank you very much, Aloria. Your comments are gone beyond the two minutes.
Thank you, Mark.
Anyone else in the public wish to be heard at this point? Hold on, sorry. I'd like to get a motion to adjourn, but we will go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in the matter of Donahue versus Town of Watertown and Watertown Police Association. And the docket number is there pursuant to Mass. General Law 30A, Section 21A3, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let me also remind the folks that we will not be returning to open session after this meeting. Is there any discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Bays.
Yes.
Counselor Donato.
Yes.
Counselor Feltnar.
Yes, and are we to use a link that Steve Magoon gave us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Leave this meeting and go to the link that Steve sent out.
Counselor Gannon.
Yes.
Counselor Canelas.
Yes.
Counselor Palomba.
Yes.
Counselor Pichorelli.
Yes.
Counselor Woodland.
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. Good night and happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Night.